Exceed the limit.
There we go again.
Exactly, so they're gonna charge-
So we can clarify out there on dollar limit, it don't hurt me at all.
Well, see, I understand Luana's limit too, because Luana has to reconcile it.
Right.
And if they don't turn in receipts, we're still stuck paying it, but she doesn't have the receipt to prove what happened. And so, there's gonna-
But like on this credit card, I mean, this is like on a long-term trip, or a long-distance trip. This would be like out of state, or like to North Texas, or something like that. Just like the other day, I've asked before for Valero credit cards. A lot of these places we go down to Glossbrum, or stuff like that, down around San Diego, Fallington, or go back down to other places, they don't have a Chevron or Chevron. They have Valero. A lot of these deputies have to buy stuff out of their pocket, for the simple reason they can't put gas in the vehicle. They can't get there and back on one tank of gas. So, I would like to have some Valero gasoline. Appreciate it again, Carl.
So, if we're going to issue another gas card, and we cancel one that you already have, we have trouble getting the signed papers back from your department on who has what card?
We're kinda going through a lot of different secretaries too right now, and I'm going through a lot of different individuals, so we're trying to catch it. It's just like, I know the people not stealing anything from the county. I know they're doing it, sometimes they can't get the receipt to point it to point B, but they're actually putting gas in their vehicle.
But, I think Sheriff, that's where it comes to, you know, sometimes, if I'm fighting for my money, how hard am I gonna fight? If I'm fighting for your money, oh well, and there seems to be a real lackadaisical attitude about the county's money. And that's, I know, I keep getting pounded about, you know, I'm budget tight. Yeah, I am, because the attitude about county's money is, ah, it's just the county's. You know what, as a taxpayer, that's part of my money, and I wanna know where it goes. I want those receipts. I don't mind giving you a credit card, but, and I don't mind trying to help you, but those receipts need to be turned in. That credit card needs to have every receipt, penny for penny, turned in with it.
We can't pay that credit card bill until we have the documentation to support the charges on it. So, your comment a while ago, if we can pay and then chase receipts, we can't do that.
That's what I'm saying, we can't.
Exactly.
We just need to be, people need to be as responsible with the county money as they are with their own money. I mean, there's just too much lackadaisical attitude when it comes to the county's money. Everybody's like, oh, yeah.
But that's kinda where I'm at. Here we go again.
I mean, Luana refused some of my receipts, so I know. I mean, I know how she is. She made me go back, and we do the whole thing.
And I bought stuff out of my pocket, and I had to pay tax on it. Guess what, you don't get tax on it.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Those are procedures. So...
So, we give you a credit card, you gonna be insured at credit card?
You're gonna be responsible for the debt and the receipts.
No problem there, pin your four.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve issuing deputies that travel out of the county credit cards to cover expenses, the money curve.
With the Sheriff's Department being, let's amend that, with the Sheriff's Department being responsible for receipts, not Sheriff's Department-
Right, and they must turn in.
The sheriff being responsible. The county sheriff.
What kinda, what kinda credit limit?
What kind of card?
What kinda card, Visa, Discover?
Yeah, I imagine a Visa or something.
And what's the credit limit? Thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand? These are, these are basically, that's why we're getting new vehicles for you all, for the Sheriff's Department every time. So, it's not gonna be an engine blown, there's not gonna be probably a transmission blown. If there is something like that blown, you're gonna, they're gonna be warranty, under warranty, you're gonna call Ford, or whatever vehicle it is, or whatever Chevy, or whatever GMC, they're gonna come and pick it up, they're gonna give them another car, or whatever it may be. I think something that might break down, or something like that, most of it's under warranty. I don't know what would break down on a newer vehicle, but, I understand, I don't think we'd have to make it ten, fifteen thousand dollars, you know, because we're not gonna blow something on, that's what we're giving a brand new car.
If they were to run over something in the road, whether it be a blown-out tire from an eighteen wheeler, and they run over that, knock the radiator out of it, no warranty will not cover it.
Right, but we're insured under that. We call the insurance, that's a wreck.
Still gonna get towed.
We're gonna do the wrecker after.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's considered a wreck, that's why we carry a, the insurance we carry. You hit, that's a road hazard. Now, what do you think, what do you think Sheriff would be, what do you think would be good?
Okay, like, drive about twenty-five hundred five dollars, because like I said, if ever goes down, if it ever goes down, I gotta send a deputy, and we can't wait for a check. I'll be on the weekend, or something like that, can't wait for a check from him. Like I said, most of these stuff on the car, it's gonna be long distance, ain't gonna run to Gorries and West, or East, not running up here to Dayton to take a female inmate. These gonna be long-distance trips, these gonna be overnight trips.
Or stuff to this thing.
That's what we've been running into, so we have four or three times a week now. So, we do a lot of traveling now.
So, basically, you're saying, if they, if they, what happened to happen, or something would happen to happen, because engine, the engine do blow, and stuff like that, this would be just like to stay over on a site motel, or something like that, or a dam?
To do that, and meet this new deputy out there too.
Because, I mean, if you put a small limit, like say, five hundred dollars, a couple of deputies make a couple trips, they cards won't be anymore.
Five hundred dollars?
Something should happen, you know? I mean, that doesn't mean that they're gonna spend that kind of money, but, you know, you don't, I s-
The limit is one transaction?
Twenty-five.
Yeah. So, where are we at?
I wouldn't, twenty-five, I would go to more than that.
Okay.
So, we're holding you accountable, if they spend more, and they don't have a receipt, you're gonna pay more. Pin your four, Tracy. I know it. Twenty-five hundred dollars will be great, that'd be a great card.
With a twenty-five hundred five dollars.
I second your motion.
All in favor, say aye.
What type of card?
Sir? Miss? What'd you say?
Say what type of card?
Visa.
The one with the lowest interest rate.
We better not be paying interest.
No, he don't pay. One is no interest.
Are we good? Oh, I'm telling you so. Well, no. Okay, number seventeen is to discuss approve-disapprove of stalling a cell phone booster for the annex building similar to the one that was installed in the juvenile probation temporary courtroom, and that's Carl.
Okay, uh, times that I've been in there, you know, it just depends on where you're standing. Sometimes you gotta signal, sometimes you want, sometimes you be talking. I mean, Paul just drops, and I've heard several people complain about this, and, you know, people there at night, and, you know, like, I heard on camel this morning, there was some kinda fire alarm that went off. I mean, if you're stuck in a building, you don't have a phone signal? And, I mean, I don't know.
Well, let me tell you this, Carl, just a little bit further, because I know this comes back to me getting a cell phone booster, but before I got this booster in here, I went and talked to you-
No, I didn't have anything to do with this.
But I, but I wanna explain what I did, I went and talked to US Cellular, I mean, AT&amp;T, I went and talked to Sprint, to see why phones wouldn't work, because a booster will not necessarily work. They said it's the metal, if you're in a metal building. And Luana said that they have this problem in this building, and have been complaining about it for a little over three years. The JPOs and everybody else. But we went over there, I called the sheriff, I've called everybody that was on the call, trust me, Charlie's phone worked yesterday, because I answered it repeatedly. The sheriff said that his phones work over there, Mr. Vee and I went in there, we went to every office. Now, I bought, I went and got all of our phones from Premier, and bought every one of them in here and tried them, 3G, 4G, iPhones, different phones, and none of them would work. But when we went over there, and we talked to the landmen, they, they all told me, they said our phones work fine out here, we don't have any issues. I asked if they had any dropped calls, they said no dropped calls. We had Vicki walk through the building with us, he tried his phone, Sylvia and I went to different rooms, and we called each other, Bob called us. Then we went and got Deputy Kunshtik, and we had him go in the different offices and call us. And nobody, I did not get, and of all the people we talked to out in that building, and I went over there two days in a row, nobody ever said they had a dropped call. Now, we did have two days where the, um, what do you call them, the satellites were not working, and we were all dropping calls, because we're having some issues with satellites here. But as far as the booster, those guys were telling me, Delectus told me he's had no problem, I talked to Hyatt Control, they said they've had no problem. Charlie's phone worked yesterday, but, I mean, in here, none of our phones were working.
Do you know how a signal gets inside a building?
Well, I don't wanna tell you what I was told, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, maybe you can educate the other.
They told me, as long as you have windows in the building, you should get a signal, that it should not be blocked.
Okay, and a metal building can't get in there?
They said, as long as you have windows in the building, it should, it should not be blocked. They said if there's windows, like we have windows in the annex, they said there's pretty much no reason a cell phone should be blocked. They don't know why it would be blocked. Because what I did, the reason I brought all these different phones in here, and I played with them, and I told-
Different phones, or different providers?
Both. Because we carry both. And so, I mean, Sprint and AT&amp;T are the most used around here, but Verizon and T-Mobile do have service there, because I had them run the antennas.
I guess whenever I was there, it would, you know, there's a lot of different factors. If you're standing by a window, your phone that you have, what type of phone it is, the provider, the service that you have, the weather outside, I mean, there's a lot of different factors, and I will tell you-
There is, but no phones worked here. And Luana, how long has that been an issue? Because when we talked about it, how long was it an issue?
Well, like, before you got this booster put in here, there were times my cell phone would work, then there's other times it would not.
Well, none of ours worked.
Sometimes I would have like one bar here, sometimes I might have two or three.
None of ours worked. I mean, but we brought them in here, we played with them, we had the JPOs bring all their phones in here, their on-call phones, and everything else. But I can tell you, I went and talked to all the landmen, and I could not get one person in there and tell them that they did have a problem.
That's fine with me, if you did your homework, and you say everything is good to go, and we never have a problem, that's fine with me.
Sheriff, do you, I asked you numerous times, I went and talked to all your deputies, to be sure that they all worked. Your secretary said hers worked, there was no issue.
I haven't missed a call yet, have you?
You haven't missed a call yet?
I call all the time, by everybody.
When I call you, you don't answer?
Yes, all I do is-
Is this call?
Good point.
I mean, if there becomes a problem, I don't mind, because people on call need to get their call.
Okay, but you did the research, and it's okay?
I did it.
Okay. No action on that item, moving right along.
Number eighteen is discuss approve-disapprove regularly scheduled commissioners' court meetings for calendar year 2012. Please note that some, this is just proposed, there's question marks, I'm not holding anybody to anything, let's look at that. I know today's December fifteenth, we just have one meeting, sket, you know, we're gonna have a million meetings this month, but we have one scheduled. Luana, uh, Luana, uh, helped us get this together, I was out for a day or so, and she helped me get this all together in case I wasn't here. It's still the second Tuesday, it's still the last working day. Uh, the only thing that I'm gonna say, we did not put a time on here, I know night meetings were a thing that we discussed, or evening meetings, or whatever you wanna call them. I don't know if anybody'd like to make one meeting, a month of evening meeting, if anybody'd like to change anything around, if anybody'd like to, what does it sound here, December eleventh and December twenty-eighth, I don't know if we wanna hold anything, um...
I put those in there in case we continue with the tradition of two meetings per-
Right, right.
Now, if December thirty-first is not declared a holiday on our next item next year, then that would be the last working day of the month to be held in court, should we go to two meetings in December.
Is December thirty-first a holiday this year? I think, I think it was, I think Sylvia just captured what was there.
Actually, December thirty-first this year is on the weekend.
Is it?
You do twenty-twelve holidays, January first twenty-twelve is discussed with the twenty-twelve holidays.
Right.
Nothing was decided at the end of last year what to do with New Year's Day. That's done this year.
Right. And I know that's all, so I'm sorry. No, you're fine.
Which New Year's Day this year is on a Sunday?
Right.
So, when is the commissioners' court date of conference? I know we always need to change that.
I checked all those with everybody. Yes.
On commissioners' court, there you have March thirtieth twice, no April, that's like, it should be April thirtieth.
Where are you at, Pete?
Mm-hmm.
Tell me where you're at. Oh, right across, that should say April thirtieth on that Friday.
Yeah. And I don't think it'd be on a Friday, March thirtieth's on Friday. It'll look right.
You know what, I'll get my phone.
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday, Carol?
April thirtieth is a Monday.
Monday.
I think, Grace, if two decent would have the almost scheduled meeting whenever you're ready, for one, we just have some special ones.
I think we should only have traditional, like we've always had, one-
Just one on December's schedule.
I don't know about the thirteen, you think thirteenth would be good, or the bill, or you think we jump into that Monday on the seventeenth, Luana?
I mean, you're gonna have people holler either way, those bills that are due on the tenth, that they aren't getting until the fifteenth, like we are this time, already hollering, the other ones are getting theirs a little earlier than they normally do, so...
Keep it there on the Thursday if you want.
Yeah.
Or either that, or jump into Monday the seventeenth, as long as it's around, there's no issue.
You know what, I'd rather leave it on a Thursday, when y'all do Monday the seventeenth, for some reason, I know we say we have to post this seventy-two hours in advance, on the seventy, I mean, four o'clock here on the Monday, before we have to go post those meetings, on the day before, all of a sudden, everybody wants to show up with that agenda item. And technically, we don't have to take them, but I don't wanna call all these special meetings, you know? And so, we have to have time to type these agendas, I mean, and then people still walk in and start screaming at us, so it doesn't-
Thirteen.
So, let's just leave it there, so you'll give me at least, you know what I'm saying?
But, the other two on December, no, I think we should just have one meeting-
Just scratch those two out, two question marks?
Scratch those, and then, with the corrections that Pete caught right there.
Crash out on December eleventh?
And twenty-eighth.
And then change that to Friday, I mean, uh, March thirtieth, April thirtieth, Monday. What do y'all wanna do about an evening meeting?
Keep them as it is. We have to, we have to make one, or for any reason, we'll make one, but as of now, we'll keep them like this. What do y'all think?
Pete?
I don't wanna have any fresh head.
You don't want any more period P.
If it's necessary to have an evening meeting, I don't mind having it. If we have to go, it needs to be addressed by more people to attend, you know?
We can all-
I don't think we should schedule any if we need to have, I would say, have a special one. Come on, Pete.
I second, you gonna make a first?
I'll, I'll make-
Okay, but let's now, okay, just so we're all on the same page, we're crossing out December eleventh, December, okay, we have Tuesday, January tenth, uh, January thirty-first, Tuesday, March fourteenth, Tuesday, February twenty-ninth, Wednesday, March thirteenth, Tuesday, March thirtieth, Friday, April tenth, Tuesday, April thirtieth, Monday, May eighth, Tuesday, May thirty-first, Thursday, June twelfth, Tuesday, June twenty-ninth, Friday, July tenth, Tuesday, July thirty-first, Tuesday, August fourteenth, Tuesday, August thirty-first, Friday, September eleventh, Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, Friday, October ninth, Tuesday, October thirty-first, Wednesday, November thirteenth, Tuesday, November thirtieth, Friday, and December thirteenth, Thursday. Carol, does that matter to you, you got?
Yes.
In your calendars? And so, if we have a special meeting, y'all are gonna fuss at me, so that's at six o'clock though.
Of course, we're gonna fuss at you, but we-
Y'all are gonna fuss at me about everything.
We're gonna fuss at you no matter what, so...
James made the motion, and Tracy's seconding it.
I'll make it. Yeah, I could put you right on.
At nine AM.
At nine AM.
But, if we have special meetings, y'all are gonna agree to about six PM. Y'all are-
We may not agree, we may not agree with you, but we'll come with you.
Nah, yeah, all these are gonna be day meetings, unless we're a night meeting.
Do you want that part of your motion?
Yeah.
Because you know, like, a lot of times, the public wants a night meeting, and if it's something that's of real interest, I want, I want them to be able to be here.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, a lot of times, we just go through, it's just something small.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number nineteen on the agenda is to discuss approve-disapprove Karn County holidays for calendar year 2012. And before everybody says something, if y'all will notice, Thursday, November twenty-second is missing, we left out Thanksgiving, we need to amend it to add Thanksgiving.
How many days, how many holidays is that?
Would you say December twenty-second?
I left out the twenty-second.
Look at, look at Thanksgiving, there's a Monday and a Wednesday. I mean, a Wednesday and a Friday.
If we put Thanksgiving in here, that's gonna bump it up to fourteen. I'm gonna tell you, the only one that I have heard a lot of flack about-
Thirteen and a half, with the half-day on Wednesday. What do we have last year, how many days do we have all of this? What was it last year? Fourteen?
I think it was twelve and a half.
Number thirteen and a half this year.
One day, Good Friday, Friday.
Which one do I have a problem with, or which one I've got a lot of complaints about? Was the half-day on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Really, one of the only businesses in town that actually closed half-day, everybody else stays open. Everybody, they acknowledge Thanksgiving, but I had a lot of complaints about the fact that there was people coming in from out of town that wanted to do business, there was people that were gonna be closed four and a half days, like a lot of our businesses that are self-contained, or self-run, or whatever, they wanted to be able to have that extra half a day, come in and file work, and do work, and, they were coming in from out of town.
Probably a lot of our, our people too, they have to go out of town to go visit their families too, and that half a day, they get to pack, and they get to get to the destination.
Well, other businesses have families too, that they wanna pack and go see, but they-
But we, but we run this one.
Yeah, we run this one, but, but we're supposed to serve the public, not the public serve us.
I understand. But we have to take care of our people too.
And, and also, if, if an office doesn't wanna be open, they can close their own office, if they choose to do that. But, as a business sense, and if we're gonna run the county like a business, if they choose to do that, that's, that's their option, but I don't think that we, as commissioners, should approve it.
I think, we've always had this half-day, right?
Yes.
Ever since I've been here eleven years, we've had this half-day, every year, this comes up judged, every year, it's complained about, people complain about it and everything, and I still go for that half a day, and I still work today.
Second.
All in favor?
Well, you were gonna say something, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go for that half a day, because for us to be closed four and a half days, if they want to close their office, and they do that, that's fine.
Four and a half days.
Four and a half days? What did I say?
Four and a half, right.
Four and a half, because you're closed half a day Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I mean, and I understand that, that we need to take care of people, but if an elected officer chooses to close their office, and they do that, then they can answer the public for that, because Walmart loves their people and their families, just like we do, so does HEB, so does every business in town. Nobody else takes that half a day, and I think we're here to serve the public and not the public serve us, and I think we need to be open that half a day for people to be able to do business. And if somebody else chooses to close it, they can close it.
I make, I make the motion to go ahead and accept the one as-is, like this.
Whoa, 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 sorry. Okay, December thirty-first, Monday, New Year's Eve, why are we taking New Year's Eve off? That's not the actual date we need to take off, Tuesday, January first. We're not taking any time off for this New Year's Eve, because it's on a Monday, but I think a lot of people are observing it January second. So, you need, my opinion, January second, twenty-twelve, as a holiday for New Year's Eve. December thirty-first needs to be decided next year, just January first, December thirteen, should be considered during twenty thirteen.
So, you're wanting to add January second, Monday, January second?
For this year's New Year's Eve, and then, December thirty-first, I ain't coming to work after a seven, New Year's Eve the next day, are you coming to work January first, twenty-twelve, or thirteen? No.
You wanna add on one?
But that's for twenty thirteen, that's not-
Right. And then, I think traditionally, what we do is, January first is considered a holiday, so you consider it at the end of the year for twenty twelve.
So, you're saying take January second, in lieu of January first, because it falls on a holiday?
Right.
I don't agree with that either.
Well, you're taking Veterans Day off on Monday, when it falls on a Sunday, so what difference does that?
Well, that's nationally observed.
But that's an observed holiday, that we're honoring our veterans, and that's totally different than, well, I had a party, and I couldn't come to work.
Well, I don't have a party on Veterans Day, I'm sorry I had a-
No, I said that's honoring our veterans, but I don't understand that January second in lieu of, I mean, we're holidaying ourselves. So, you're not saying because I can't take you to work. If you wanna close your office, you can that day, but look at that, you're gonna be closed on the thirty-first, the first, and the second, three days, and people still- Well, if it was on there for last, are we closing thirty-first this year?
It's a Saturday.
No, it's a Saturday.
That's why we're saying, January first is on a Sunday, take it January second, December thirty-first, twenty twelve, take that off, because you're going to decide at the end of twenty twelve, what you're gonna do with January first, twenty first.
But I'm just gonna say, look how many holidays, that would be, that would be almost fifteen holidays, plus everybody gets vacation leave, plus everybody gets sick leave. How many days should the county support somebody to be off?
You're only taking thirteen and a half days if you take off-
Thirteen and a half days is still a lot of days.
You take off December thirty-first-
I mean, each elected official can choose to close their office that will, and if you wanna do that, that's fine, but we should be open to serve the public, not the public serving us.
And why would you close December thirty-first? That's not the holiday, January first would be a holiday that your banks are gonna be closed.
So, are the banks closed January second?
I don't know, my bank, not.
So, what have we done in the past?
Shouldn't be closed on New Year's.
Well, I think this is the first time since I've been here, that New Year's Day is falling on the weekends, I can't answer that.
As a citizen, I wonder, what about Good Friday? Why are we taking Good Friday off?
Because that's the religion.
It's traditional here that we've always taken Good Friday off. People go to church on Good Friday. Some businesses are open in the morning, they close at noon.
When is the church, during daytime, or at night?
At three o'clock, three o'clock.
At night, at night.
Okay, I knew it.
I'm a Catholic man, sorry.
This year, New Year's Eve falls on what, Sunday?
This year, as the-
January first is Sunday.
December thirty-fourth is up. They're all on Saturday.
Saturday, so January first is Sunday.
Christmas is Sunday.
I mean, but why, why do we owe people a holiday when the holiday falls on the weekend? The state does it all the time, you don't take in lieu of, the state does not take in lieu of, you don't do it.
And a veteran's holiday doesn't take off?
Probably not November 12th. But the.
That would be my guess.
No, we did observe Veterans Day, I worked in the state for almost ten years, I know what holidays they take, but we never took in lieu of. If something falls on a weekend, like Veterans Day, you're honoring the people that went, fought and died for our country and the flag thing. So we all understand that, but why are we taking in lieu of holidays? If somebody wants it in lieu of, that needs to be responsible on that person. I mean, I just think we need to serve the public and if you guys want to approve that, that's fine. I'm just saying I don't. I wouldn't approve Monday, January 2nd, and I wouldn't approve half a day on Thanksgiving because everybody else in town is working, but the county employees are off. Because we can't be, because we set our own holidays.
And you'd also remove from your proposition December 31st?
New Year's Eve, yes.
Yeah.
Well, if you want to scratch November the 21st and then each individual want to take off, they can close their office.
That's how I look at it because that half a day, you have, you know.
Let that person decide if they can give their people off.
And you're going to give them vacation or sick, because then you're going to have people saying, well, my boss said we're closing the day for the holiday and why should I get penalized because my boss closed my office and I'm taking a vacation day?
It's not vacation or sick, I think actually what the AG's opinion says, that's right. I think what the AG opinion says, everybody's open and close at will because nobody's following policy anyway, so I'm not.
I don't know.
On these days, I'm just saying, if, on that half a day, I'm not approving that and on that January 2nd, everybody else is at work, why can't we be at work?
So if somebody closes the office January 2nd, how am I supposed to pay them? Regular time or make them take vacation?
Luanne, you answer that.
There's been an AG opinions issue that if an official officially closes the office, then the employees can still be paid without utilizing any of their vacation, comp, sick, whatever.
Well, that's where you say it falls on them.
It falls on them. Let them, I mean, if they're choosing to do that, but as commissioners, for us to sit there and say that business should not run, that should be different. Everybody else is running, everybody else loves their families. I mean, just because we were our county doesn't make us special. We don't love any harder, any quicker, any faster than Walmart, HEB.
Walmart, HEB don't close on Thanksgiving.
But I mean, it doesn't make us any different. Everybody loves their families, everybody loves their family.
Well, I think one of the reasons that the county has had the good holiday schedules we've had in the past. I know Stormy would always bring it up as it's a part of compensation due to what he termed as the little pays of employees. It's a way to compensate a branch benefit.
Saying thank you to your employees.
Well, I mean, but you know what, everybody, every company out there thanks their employees, I mean, we all do it. But that's just a lot of holidays. If you choose to close your own office on January 2nd or that half a day before Thanksgiving, you know what? Then the public needs to know you're doing it, but we as commissioners, this office is going to be open, I'm going to tell you that right now. If we don't approve, I just don't think it needs to be done. That's a lot of time, that's a lot, a lot, a lot of time that we're expecting the taxpayers to compensate us. They compensate us, they gave us large raises, they compensate us holidays.
You gave us a large raise.
They compensate.
Taxpayer paid for it.
Taxpayers paid for it. And I voted against it, but thank you, Ms. Malone, so anyways.
So Judge, are you, so your count, then what you're suggesting is twelve holidays, right? I just want to make sure I have that.
That's right, I'm suggesting twelve holidays, that's one day a month.
So you're scratching out the number 21st and December 31st, is that?
No, I scratched ours, the half a day Thanksgiving.
Which is November 1st, right?
Right.
And then you also said December 31st?
Right.
Tracy took that one out, I took that one out.
Okay, because then the holiday would truly be the January 1st of 2012.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I get this.
Actually, it's at 11.
Actually, the date is not there now.
She took out the half day. Add Thanksgiving Day. But anyway, I, my, I think, I mean, if they want to close them, let them close them. Let the public know who's doing what, why are we going to be responsible?
Twelve, number 22 is in here, actual Thanksgiving Day.
I know, but add that in and that's still 11, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
What she's proposing.
And if these days change next year, you know what? The holidays can go up to sometimes more, they can go up to 13, some of these days that are on Saturdays or Sundays are going to go up. So it fluctuates back and forth. And I actually ran this across this third and the actual holidays I got was anywhere from 10 to 13 a year. Some counties gave 10, some gave 13, so I wanted to see what people were doing. But I just don't think we owe people, I mean, we all love our families equally and county employees get off more time because we can set our own holidays. And I just don't think that's right.
So you want to scratch that?
I want to scratch Monday, January 2nd, I want to scratch a half a day Thanksgiving.
You're leaving December 31st on there.
No.
Uh, December 31st? No, Tracy wanted to scratch that one.
Well, I do, yeah.
I mean, but in lieu of, I mean, everybody else is going to come back before January 2nd, why can't we? Everybody's going to work that half a day before Thanksgiving, why can't we? Two and a half?
Two.
Is January 2nd one?
It's only January 2nd.
Right, so it's only one of them.
Okay, so initial results, you made a motion, are you supposed to put that motion according to this or?
Well, my motion is going to be, it's going to be according to this, I understand that December, the 31st and all, that's fine because that's in New Year's. I think the last time we didn't have that one up either, but I still want to make it for the twelve and a half with the Thanksgiving half a day off.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Aye opposed.
Three opposed.
Two opposed.
Tracy, Barbara, and Pete. And so then I make a motion that we take off New Year's Eve and that half a day on Thanksgiving. And then that would give us January, Monday, January 16th, February 20th, April 6th, May 28th, July 4th, September 3rd, October 8th, November 11th, November 21st, November 23rd.
22nd.
22nd, I'm sorry, that's going to be, I need to add Thanksgiving back in there. That's going to be November 22nd, November 23rd, December 24th, and December 25th, that's my motion.
I'll second one.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Did we get that done?
We're on to the next, right?
Number 20th is to request the status of principal insurance coverages and bring up to date. We've had some issues with the insurance, I guess that we all know of. I was told as of yesterday, or as of last night, or I talked to Jess, I don't know what the last time you talked, did you get anything in writing from Jess yet?
No.
No, we haven't got anything in writing, there's been questions about the insurance, do we have coverages? The, we did have three employees that passed away and there was questions within our coverage because from what I understand, we had principal medical and principal life. And somehow principal medical and principal life got crossed, that's when we paid that $7,000 the last meeting. And I think Vi explained it to us that it was Senate Bill 51, so I pulled Senate Bill 51 and I started calling the insurance companies to see what happened. Senate Bill 51, what it says is that you have an employee that's on your insurance as of January 5th, like just say 2011, and they term him on January 5th and you don't notify, you have to pay the whole month of January regardless. But say you don't let the insurance company know until February 8th, you have to pay the whole month of February regardless. And I think that's more or less just to protect the insurance companies because people were like saying, you know, we term this day, you have to, because insurance becomes affected different dates. That's what that $7,000 was for, was for termed insurance that principal did not know we termed.
Term date.
They call it, yeah, and they say term, they said that they did not know we termed from date to date to date to date to date. Because we had principal medical and principal life, they were taking some of our life insurance money and applying it to that medical money. Because it was going both, well, because the checks just go in a lockbox, they don't go to humans, just like, have you ever read your bill that says do not remit correspondence with this? So if somebody was remitting correspondence with it, they were taking out the checks and chunking the correspondence. So what ended up happening is we were being questioned about whether or not the three individuals that just lost their lives that worked for the county, whether or not those insurance costs would be paid. And as Jess has been arguing with it, Little Jess has been arguing with it.
And I've been arguing with it also, I have not been sitting on my butt, really nothing.
And so anyway, what happened is, is we need something in writing, we're hoping, Jess told me as of yesterday that we have got to get some internal controls in place, that's something that we can talk about yet as the future comes to a board. But we have a verbal from Jess Williams Jr. that these claims will be paid, we have not received anything in writing yet. I have asked for something in writing, so we'll know that these families are taken care of and that this stuff will go on. The reason I called is because I started getting calls saying that we didn't have any life insurance. I did not know if that was true. Vi came in and she gave us the part about the Senate bill and the $7,000 and we approved that and our hope was by making that retroactive, they would really save on life insurance and pay these claims. I have a verbal that says they were, I have nothing in writing. So my hope and my prayer is that they, everybody adheres to what they said they were going to adhere to and they pay that.
Okay, so basically, the principal medical insurance was what was in the question and they said we owed this $7,000, but the lie, the.
We did owe that $7,000 because we didn't term people, we turned them, they were not taking them off.
In their opinion, they say we did not notify them properly or whatever they're saying. But the life insurance policies, the way I understand it, were enforced, they were paid. What they were trying to do is twist your arm and say, well, if you don't pay the medical over here, we're not going to pay the three death claims that you have over here, they can't do that.
Well, we did receive a termination.
Now, do we pay with one check or we pay with two checks?
We did receive.
If the life insurance has been paid with one check and this has not, they cannot cancel this because it's enforced, it's been paid. I mean, it's just.
I would say that they can't because they did.
Well, 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 look.
Our hope is.
Laura, you can state your opinion all day long, I ain't making it difficult.
Well, sure, but.
But we're asking that they reinstated.
If you pay some and they won't pay the claim.
Well, at the time, they canceled it, they did not know of the claims.
Right.
It was canceled effective.
10/31.
October 31st.
It was canceled on 10/31.
It is being reinstated as of November 1st. All three claims have been filed, my office has done that, my office has been in contact with Jess. If anybody had any questions about this, you should call on me because I was answering them. If you don't call me, I don't know that you're asking them. I worked very diligently with Jen from Principal and with Jess with Principal to get this situation cleared up. We mailed the premiums yesterday, again, checks to them, we were going to argue the $7,000 that we paid. We probably had to eat some of that, but there's some of it that we are getting credit for because of that day on life insurance, we can't back that on medical insurance. I am the administrator on the insurance, I'm the person that principal talks to, I'm the person that goes in and deals with them and works with the bills. I have not been sitting on my butt, I have not been throwing bills away because of people missing notices. I appreciate people around the way in their mouth, telling them I'm not doing the job, but I'm doing the job.
My only concern is.
That question you should ask me.
My only concern is, is all I care about is I want something in writing protecting Corinth County saying that this has been reinstated. That's my only concern. A verbal agreement is not a for sure paying.
I talked to someone from Principal, I talked to claims people from Principal.
And I talked to Little Jess just after you did and he said that he was trying to get us something in writing and that he would get us something in writing. Regardless of all that, we have $170,000 in claims that need to be paid.
And they are being paid.
We do not have a formal reinstatement, we have a verbal reinstatement and as soon as we get a formal reinstatement, we will file it with the court. So we will know that those are on records, we will file it with Carol.
That written reinstatement, I would suggest also contains through September 30th, 2011, because that's what our contract is with them. Not just a reinstatement to date or to get those claims made, so we know that we don't need to go out for other life insurance.
Say that again, Luanne.
I would suggest that the reinstatement has a policy date on it through September 12th, 2012, because that's when our medical and life insurance expires.
Judge, did you try to get either Little Jess or Big Jess to come over here today to address that?
Well, there's no reason for them to, it's been cleared up.
Why, did you pay the full bill or you take any deducts yesterday?
We, what happened, your insurance automatically is taken out of your, through payroll, so we don't like, get a bill and just write a separate check. It comes out through payroll and so when we get the bill, then we reconcile. And what we did, we are taking the premiums out for December, we used those premiums to pay for the November because they claimed we still owe November. And the $1,400 that they received in November was used to credit towards the outstanding balance. So we sent them, Jen and I have been emailing each other on the ones that she acknowledged today, there's like a $200 credit we're getting on some people that were still on the life insurance policy that should have been termed.
You don't need to explain all that.
Well, yeah, I think I did because.
A yes or no, a yes or no, did you pay the full bill or did you take deducts again?
I paid what we owe on the people that are covered. So the next item on the agenda, number 21, is to discuss, approve, disapprove, or request for proposals for county life insurance and employee supplemental insurance.
That's a void.
No action.
No action.
Number 22 is to discuss, approve, disapprove, life insurance quotes from Williams Business Services, Jess Williams Jr., that's another no action. Ms. Frankie?
Oh, yes. Year-to-date collection for the county beginning our fiscal year October the 1st, $389,688.23. And delinquent collection, $12,231.28. Road and Bridge Special Collection, $53,107.46. Delinquent collection, $1,072.2. Rule 5, Emergency Fire District, $31,378.80 collection. And delinquency, $696.19.
Thank you, Ms. Frankie. Number 24 is to discuss, approve, disapprove, the treasured report.
Did you get the corrected one for?
Yes, I did.
And that, that's the one that you get all the commissioners assigned, is your copy? I signed everybody's, but that, one that needs to be approved by all of them needs to.
Ms. Frankie.
Yeah, everybody gets a copy of that, we just need one signed.
Ms. Frankie.
And that needs to go to Carol.
They're the same this time. Treasure and Autofun is the same.
I figured that's what you.
Yes, I'm sorry. I expect you to read mine, you know what I mean?
I'm getting better at it.
So once you approve it, you'll just sign that one that the two that Barbara has.
I think it's good to go because they match.
I'll make the motion to approve the treasure.
And then all of y'all sign the other one, then hand that to Carol to file. Please.
Does she have a copy of the hard copy by the report itself?
Yes, she gets a copy of the report and she gets a copy of everything that you have, I just need to sign the ones.
Next, payment of bills? Oh, I'm sorry, I.
All in favor?
No, I think we need to. Oh, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Tracy, I was telling her I thought you weren't paying attention. Motion carries. Is it biology? Bills, that's the right number, 25, correct bills. Anything out of the ordinary, Luanne, I went through it line by line and I see things that I thought that I should be asking you about our ecology last night.
I do need to make a minor change on page one, we have our quarterly installment due to the appraisal district in your bills. It's $31,487.94. Kathy faxed me a revised statement yesterday. Our actual quarter allocation with the new tax rate is $28,278.27. That's a reduction of $3,209.67, which I would like authority to make that change before we run checks, which therefore will reduce the total on page two where it says $68,433.22. That will change to $65,235.5. On page six, instead of $159.749.47, it will reduce to $156,539.80. And on the final page, page 15, the total of bills being paid to date and approved will be $246,179.65 as opposed to $249,389.32 due to the reduction in the amount due to the appraisal district based on their recalculated statement.
I hope you like that. Do you want to rerun this with the right numbers?
I will after it's approved and we can go in and change that. The case was already run, so I will run a corrected copy.
I make the motion that we approve the bills, the amendments that Luanne just gave us and let her rerun it so we can sign it and have a clean copy.
I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Just whenever you can, Luanne, and hey, guys, come back by sometime.
Sometime after.
No, it'll be a little longer than that one, mid-afternoon or later.
No. Not after five.
Number 26, reported fees, fines, money collected by the college departments, county clerk, district clerk, county attorney, Justice of the Peace, Juvenile Department, Special Projects. I have Carol up here, Carol, you going to read yours or did you just leave me one?
I just left you one, just our total collections for the month of November, or $61,508.67.
Okay, and then she has her last checks this first, she's got her total here. Then we have District Clerk, Robbie didn't, I don't have a report. Okay, and then we have. You, Bob.
We collected, month of November for the citizen, $2,507.61. For a total of $41,804.50 for the year-to-date. November court called and collected $152.25 for a year-to-date of $20,643.54. So far this year, we've collected $52,448.4 cents. And last year, we had collected by this time $44,000.42.
Can you please give yours to Carol so she can follow it? Carol, you have a copy of your own, right, so she can follow it with your report. Thank you. Justice of the Peace, we have no report from the Justice of the Peace. Juvenile, I have that one back here. I don't know if I made a copy because I don't know if you have y'all, our juveniles, we have a lot, a lot, a lot of juvenile dreams lately. We run into a lot, you don't have a lot of people that are able to pay fees on top of whatever we have been paying already or doing already. And I'm going to let y'all look at this and what it does is it tells you how many juveniles we have, how many cases we have. And somebody asked me the other day, were the guys in the fatigues, was one of y'all, and they said, are those y'all's juveniles? Those are the guys that are in the elite program that you see over here all the time in that other building, the ones that go and help with the food bank and all that. Because we're trying to get them out and do some community service and get them on a better edge, but if y'all want to look at that, that's Zima's. And if you'll hand that to Carol when you're done, so she can follow it. Are you interested in seeing it? It's the same one that we've always turned in, juvenile, the number of cases and, because we don't have it, we don't have a large collection. Here, here, right. You know, what if it's all been approved and y'all aren't here as long as three of us signed it, I think we're okay. Would that be okay, Tracy and James, we're going to be back in town today, if three of us sign that, can you follow this, if three of us sign it?
I think we could sign the sheet and then correct the other one.
I mean, in the motion, it's already captured that we approved it, so we're okay, right? I mean, I just know you like it, signing up in court, and I know how you can be, so. She looks at me and goes right back at you. Okay, Special Projects? She's got the look, I got the eye. I got it.
What I have noticed is that the very top of my report, and I've been doing this for hours.
a while, it's just building permits, but it's the determination development application, and I noticed about two months ago, I still haven't changed it.
Did you make Carol one?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
For November, two thousand and eleven, we had thirteen determination development applications, totally three hundred and twenty-five dollars. On-site sewage facility applications for the month of November, total one thousand six hundred and fifty. Inspectors portion, one thousand and forty. TCQ's portion, sixty. The county's portion received is five hundred and fifty. That includes the vote of the change in the middle of November, around the eighteenth. Uh, I've also attached at the back of the rest of the report, you were discussing in one of your meetings-
Illegal dumping?
Illegal dumping, yes, ma'am. Thank you. And we have had two classes in the prior year at no fee. This next class that they're handling, that is for county attorneys, county judge, commissioners, all elected officials, constables, sheriff's department, and how it affects them and how they can proceed to rectify the situation. Currently, now, there is a fee for the class, but there is one, if you go to the website that's attached, if you're still interested, um, there's a fee and dates, and I think the closest one is, I wanna say in January, Elive Oak County. I didn't see any other ones closer. The gentleman had been going to Wilson County the past two years and had this meeting and a lot of the attorneys, and, and I did hand them out last year and the year before. The other thing was notification of the blowout, and I emailed the judge and everybody that, EMC, who I thought was, um, to be notified, such as the sheriff, who was probably already aware. I don't know how y'all wanna be notified, the gentleman did contact me because I'm the only office open to contact, but he was given-
I get the DPS too.
Yeah?
I do get the DPS ones.
Okay, but I was also notifying Shelby so that he could call him to report back to you, but I thought she wanted to know.
And Sharon, we have a deal coming up while you're giving this report, I know that, um, I guess you're getting inundated with those phone calls of who do we call for this or who do we call for that, and I know that the sheriff is, I know that I am, because everybody's a little bit on that panic edge of something happening with all these, I mean, when people smell something funny, I get the phone call, will you call TCQ or when? And I know that there's a big concern, because Stephen Gladstone showed up the other day, and, uh, he asked me to get with some of these companies, and we're going to, I'm gonna get with you to coordinate with me and sheriff and Shelby, and, um, we're going to try to coordinate something that's open to everybody, to be able to put out information of what's going on, because we're anticipating some, I mean, things are getting just a little bit, I mean, y'all have all seen the traffic pick up, you've all, I mean, and it's just the law of averages, stuff is gonna start happening with as much equipment as we have now, and that's just gonna be without a doubt, and it's gonna affect you, it's gonna affect the sheriff, it's gonna affect me. And Mr. Gladstone was here with EPS, and we will get something set up on this, and we'll have your input of what you think would be the notice, easiest to help, or what you think you wanna do. And I'll let you know when they, when we do that, we're looking at the first part of February or the middle of February, but I'll let you know. Okay? He just came by and asked you to do this, so.
Chief of those has put on a program in November, um, that was hazmat information testing certificate. There were hours offered to the county. Shelby and I did attend, they have them periodically, they're open for any county employee officials to take those hazmat or, or any type of information to deal with the situations.
We have a bunch of stuff coming in, questions about the fracking, about the H2S, about the gas, about the burns, about, so we're gonna try to get some different local committees in here to talk to everybody and explain to y'all, and give them the information system to be able to get hold of everybody, just to see how they say.
Which they do have. Dispatchers have that information, uh, the sheriff's office knows what to do when they go out to it, they've been handling it and have been handling it well. Ninety-nine percent of the time, I believe that there's not too much that the county has to do other than show up and back people away from the situation.
Correct.
But at some point, we do need to know what our positions are as commissioners, as everybody, as constables, as-
Mr. Gladstone, like I said, we'll be setting that up, and we'll be setting it up through DPS, the sheriff, myself, and Shelby. And we'll get everybody in place, because it's something that they came and asked me to do, and so I agreed to do it, just to get knowledge out to the county, kinda thing.
You just don't forget to invite Shelby.
Oh, no, no, we won't. Hey, but you have something in here, come back, come back.
Oh, I have something else?
Uh-huh.
What's the other?
CMI policy?
I've had that on the, um, on the report for several months.
So this is, this is-
And, and that's what we spoke about in the budget workshops, that I had asked y'all to revisit your drug testing, uh, I think that, I'm not real clear with the date, I wanna say nineteen ninety-six is the last time the counties have reviewed it. We have some issues with it, it needs to be revisited, but it's not from this office's point of view, it's gonna be how y'all want to address it as usual.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was just making sure that, I just saw another page in here, I wanted to hear what it is.
Appreciate that.
Does anybody else have anything with anyone report? Tonight your turn here, Jeff. I'm kidding, come on. Number twenty-seven is report for Road and Bridge Department, Jeff Beatrick.
Give me all.
Is this a bill?
A bill.
Did you make a copy for Carol, Jeff?
Oh.
Jeff, did you make a copy for Carol?
I thought she needed one. I can get her one, I'll pick one up from Bob.
Okay. I want her to file whatever you give us, so she can follow it with the-
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, that was the equipment that we, uh, we sold there in, uh, Crescisco at auction. I think we did pretty good with it, so, I think it did real good. Um, on road, roads we're working on, y'all seen in the bills, we have pretty substantial bills, we hauled out, um, County Road, uh, three eighty-nine, three fifty-five, two thirty-three. This was a bus route road, we got it, they are, the road is being used now by school district before they turned around and had to go back, now, now we're using it, and, um, it's a real good deal. We're working on, um, County Road, uh, two fifteen, uh, right now, school bus route also, we're working on it, trying to get it, as a matter of fact, the trucks are running, that's the only dry part in the county, I think. Uh, we are working in that, uh, in the Fall City area right now. County Road, two seventy-seven, two eighty-five, and two eighty-nine, which is in, uh, James's precinct, the oil company's got a total mess of them roads there, and we're trying to get them back in shape to, uh, the public can travel through there, because we have a lady there that is on oxygen, and a truck, uh, has problems getting in there with oxygen, so we're trying to get it, so she can have, uh, her medical supplies that she needs them. Uh, that's the areas that we are hitting, and we're trying to get, uh, I've been wanting to move to do some other jobs that we just, just been bombarded with this. County Road, three sixty, uh, James knows where that road's at, that's the road there in, uh, it's a dead-end road, it runs through the Bandrew property down there in Gillette. Uh, all companies moved in there, and they started on, doing some activity in there, and the weak road that was there did not hold up, it fell apart on them. Uh, they're gonna come in, they're buying four pipes for the roads, and they're gonna buy material, which, they're gonna spend about two hundred thousand on that road, I'm gonna put the equipment in there, one maintainer, a roller, and a water truck, and, uh, we're gonna lay down the material and stuff, but they're buying all the products for us to do this. It's a dead-end road, but we do have people living on that road, and right now, when the, uh, they, they keep taking noses in there, and they keep getting deeper and deeper, because they're shoving all the mud aside so they can keep the public and their people coming up, but it comes down to, to an issue now with the oil company, and, uh, they got their problem, they're, they can't get their equipment in and out right now, and also, we were supposed to start on it Monday, but the weather's been holding off, because you can't work black dirt as wet as it is, so as soon as it starts drying out, we're gonna start working that one, and I'm gonna bang in some other ones that I was working on, gonna try to get that one fixed, and, uh, we're short again on a maintainer operator, I'm trying to, trying to bring some people in, I'm gonna, uh, ask Miss Caster if we can take, and, uh, I didn't put it on the agenda, but I'll get it next, uh, in January.
Get it to me before you leave.
And, uh, we'll see, we can run and see if I can even find some part-time maintainer operators that are experienced, maybe somebody wants to work part-time and stuff, but, uh, we're very short on maintainer operators, because I only have, I have two boys sick this week, and Robbie Buselman's been gone all week, his daughter's been in the hospital all week long, and, uh, they're still in the hospital, I was up this morning, she's been in the hospital for eight days already, so, um, uh, he's hoping that they get to come home today, he said that bed's not very good over there.
We have to, we have to get it.
Yeah, that's for sure, but, uh, we're, we're trying our best out there, uh, we're not getting forward, we're falling behind with everything, but, uh, it's gonna take lots of time to get this going the right way.
I've had some companies calling me, I've been referring them to you, and I've gotten some emails, I guess, where they've cced me, that some of them have talked to you after I did that presentation in San Antonio.
Yes.
After somebody heard bond, every engineer in San Antonio's chasing us.
We had meetings with one on Monday, yeah.
Yeah, we had one on Monday, and we're gonna have another one coming up in, uh, January.
I've been giving you a lot of, I've been giving your name out a lot, so.
So, yeah, we got people coming in, and they wanna give us a hand with it, but, uh, I got a lot of oil companies calling, and, uh, we, uh, yesterday, uh, got a phone call from three twenty-six, and a gentleman asked me, why are you pushing the mud off the road? He said, there's no road there, and I got over there, and the oil company's got a wind row off in the side of the road, they just took the road and just bladed it off. Yeah, they drive dirt down there, but you keep doing it, you ain't gonna have a road, so, I don't know what I can do with that deal, but, uh, I sent my bulldog out there, and he had a pretty good fight with him, and we're, I'm going back out there as soon as I get here, uh, 'cause I didn't have a four-wheel-drive truck to get over there yesterday, because mine was down, so, I'm running around on a personal truck, because I, it's got four-wheel drive, I don't have anything else that's four-wheel drive.
Johnny Smart did call me, and he said that there, he had heard something allegedly that there was an ambulance that was not able to go down a road or something, and he wanted me to clarify with you that you would know that that was not a county ambulance. He said the county ambulance is go wherever we send them, they have not refused to call, and they have not, and that if he had a problem, he would contact you directly. He did ask me to tell you that.
Okay.
He was very concerned about a comment that was made or something, and he said he wanted everybody to know it wasn't Johnny ambulance.
Okay.
So he called, because, you know, of course, somebody will call me and complain if they think that something didn't happen.
Oh, yeah.
He called me to see if I had heard, and I had heard about it, but I didn't know which ambulance company it was, and he wanted me to know it wasn't him.
Wasn't it?
He said he will contact you directly if he comes to a road that he cannot get through. Said he will contact both of us, because he-
Yeah, and he works pretty close with me on that.
Well, he's right next door to you, so y'all can throw rocks at him.
Oh, yeah. Matter of fact, he comes to visit the other day, we had a pretty long visit, so.
Anyway, that was something he wanted, he wanted, he wanted me to let you know that if there was, if, if he ran across something, he would let you know, and you, you know, that, I guess you two would work together on that.
Didn't we have a new ambulance in the budget this year? Is it gonna be four-wheel drive?
Some reason I doubt it, but I don't have the snakes on it, because Johnny hasn't ordered, did you?
You know, I never thought-
Did that lady call you that lived on three twenty-six?
Oh, yeah.
Said that she couldn't, uh, get her kids to school and all of this? So we need to try to do something with that road, because she's calling, calling, she's still a four-wheeler and called.
That's the road, that's the road that just got bladed off by the oil company.
I just get that same feeling, you're getting ready for it, you want to, y'all talking about it.
I held the phone for as good ways out of my ear, and I think it's still ringing.
Yeah, I imagine it is.
And, you know, we understand why they're upset, you know, we're the one that went like that either.
I told her I lived on the other end for, for, I've been out there for forty-eight years, and she just moved there a few years ago. Should've moved closer to town on the pavement or something, by God, it's been like this forever.
And if they, if it does rain and we get a big flood, she's gonna be looking.
I know.
She will be looking.
She'll come out of there. I don't know why they squatted there like that.
Well, they did squat.
They did, they sure did.
They squatted, and they live in a, they live in a camper.
A camper.
Seven of them.
Yeah, a woman and a husband and, uh, daughter and three kids, I think, didn't it?
Yes, sir.
And they, we need to try to get it fixed so they can get their kids to school.
Oh, they get out, they get out, because I seen them retire yesterday.
But she drives pretty fast.
Yeah, she hits some rush, she goes to them.
Wondering why their shocks are falling off. I said, Miss Piglet was thirty-five, not seventy.
We actually locked up them about twenty-five, so, we're trying to slow them down.
Yeah, she been complaining about the trucks going too fast.
But, uh, as soon as they drive up, I'm gonna try to do some work on it. Pioneer is kinda promising to me they're gonna do the first section of that road, which the, the section ain't gonna be very long, but it'll be about a mile, they're asking me if they can come in and base it, so they can get out of there, and I told them, I said, nine percent of the wells that are down that road, every entry that's down that road belongs to them, and I said, y'all are the ones that came in. The road was fixed once before, Carl got some help on that road, we had some material on it, but you can't find that material today, so. It's, that road carries so much traffic, whatever you're gonna put on it, it's gonna disappear. And that, the drought, the drought really hurt us bad.
On, on these burn ban signs, I know that one, ninety-nine, at the county line out there around Fashion, it says burn ban in effect.
Yeah, we never did pick up the burn ban signs. Are we supposed to?
Oh, well, I was just getting ready to say, I don't know if anybody called you after the commissioner's report, uh, we had to have the fireworks-
Right.
And before the fifteenth, and it had to be by yesterday, because it couldn't roll into after one o'clock this morning, remember, twelve oh one AM? Can you look the signs for us?
Yeah.
We did, we did, the burn ban's not in effect, we talked to Charlie, and Charlie said he felt it was well enough not to have a burn ban in effect nor fireworks, so just need you to look the signs if you would, please.
I, I got a couple of guys that want to work tomorrow. Uh, we did work, uh, when the moisture started setting in, we were running maintainers, uh, on Fridays, and as a matter of fact, I ran one on Friday, and worked on one on a Saturday of, uh, morning, I worked for a while, we're trying to get as much of these roads bladed, but we're kinda come to a squeaking halt right now, because we got some down here towards the Gillette area, but it rained, and they had some good rains there, and there are places, you can't get it off the mobile, or you can't blade, so, we're doing where we can, we're hauling where we can get doing, and, uh, we got a lot of places to go, and we're getting there slowly but surely with the amount of people I got, trying to keep the old truck running, uh, as I said, um, my four-wheel drive is down, we're getting it back together, and I'm using my truck so I can get around.
Thank you for doing that for us.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll get it done one more day or two.
Next is you, Luana.
Me, that we all know how I am.
That's you.
Thank you very much.
I said we love the one.
It's all right, I'll say if you think we're good.
I know, she's gonna wait till the cameras are off to talk back to me.
Yeah. As Barbara mentioned earlier, the county treasurer's report and county auditor's report do match this month on the first try. By it come to me with a preliminary report, and I showed her the corrections that needed to be made, and she made that before submission. If you will go to, on my report, on page three of the actual report, it says page two at the top, not counting the cover sheet, I gave you the explanation as to why that correction is being made to the courthouse security funds as far as the check and the posting dates of it. We took all that into account in last month's report. The very last page is items of interest, based on Local Government Code one-one-four-point-oh-two-five, section five.
There you go, Luana. Get requirements, I was, okay, go ahead. I'm gonna do this on time, so.
If you go through the actual computer-generated report and add up all available funds that the county has control over as of November thirtieth, you'll note that we have approximately four hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of funds that were not invested. We have received information from HAVA, the Help America Vote Act, that we have been approved for reimbursement for twenty-four thousand, eighty-five dollars and five cents from the HAVA general funds, and we've also been approved for reimbursement for one thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents for the HAVA education funds, and as I mentioned in a previous meeting, we have applied for the extension on those funds that are still available. The education grant funds are available till twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, in the amount of five thousand, seven sixty-eight, eighteen, and the general grant funds that are available till twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, or sixteen thousand, two seventy-seven, sixty-one.
I, I'm just gonna tell you, I have a comment on that. Why was this money left, I mean, why left, but why was this money, why is it idle? Why is it not being invested? It's a lot of money, that's, that's almost a half a million dollars of money just sitting there?
Well, you would have to direct that with by issues, the investment officer.
I mean, a half, I mean, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars is a lot to leave setting accounts, not making money for us.
That's right.
I mean, do y'all not see a problem with that?
It's a lot of money, where there's an interest.
I mean, even if it was a baby amount of interest, it doesn't matter, that's right, it's money that the county should have.
What percent before it's everywhere?
Where does she go? Is that burning?
I guess.
Is she coming back?
I mean, but I think that's something we need to address because that's, this is taxpayer money, this is not our money, but I can guarantee you, if I had a half a million dollars laying around, it would be idle.
Then maybe to a high bank.
And, I mean, we've got to learn to treat this money like it's our own, I mean, the easiest way to make money is let your money make you money. I think this is something we need to address. That's just a large chunk. I can remember back, Corin's County budget wasn't much more than that. But we need to invest that money, this money's not going to, I mean, you know, your earliest production's gonna hit, but it's not gonna be for forever. And I do have somebody coming down to talk to us about sustainability planning and investments as well, as the year goes on, as I grab down in my feet in February, so...
ACD was put out on the thirteenth, which was Tuesday, which has invested...
That's yesterday, that's the day before yesterday.
Correct.
But if that money's at idle that long, it's still money that the county's losing.
That's correct, but I'm just updating you that there has been an investment since then done, which also included...
Has lost, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Busman.
Which also included the funds that we would have received through December twelfth, which luckily, we had received a little bit earlier than normal, our sales tax monies, which was right at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per October sales.
Well, LaWanna, don't we leave a little buffer zone in there? We don't actually invest every penny.
Well, a buffer zone is one thing, but half a million dollars.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just asking you a question. We do, and what is that buffer zone?
It varies based on what we know might be coming in.
On your budget that year or your projected bills?
Not on the budget, on what we knows what might be coming in before CD matures.
We don't, we don't, I don't think we budget for unpersonally, I mean, we don't, we used to not...
Well, I know the county does it, forecasters budget several years in advance, like eighteen two, South Los Angeles, but I'm under it.
Well, if we did that, it would definitely all be invested, what wouldn't, gonna be spent within the next few days.
That's a chunk, that's a chunk of money.
And we do, when we, when we prepare investments now, by does a spreadsheet, which I go over and make suggested changes to if there's any differences, which will, like the CD we just put out covers the bills for today, the payroll for last Friday, we have another CD coming in, it may be today, it may be tomorrow, we have one coming in December twenty-ninth, we have several of them out, which that only enhances the reason that we could've had some investments done with these funds that are idle.
It's quite a staggering one, eight, seven.
Correct. So we're rolling them all the time.
But like, like in your office, you're the auditor, Michelle's, what is her title?
First assistant.
Okay, and Leanna?
Is the assistant auditor.
So you have three people in your office?
And that has what to do with what?
No, I'm just, I'm just asking a question because I didn't know exactly what they...
I just, I think we need to keep our money invested, I mean, even if it's, if it's staggered, I mean, even, we do it at home, we invest some this month and, you know, we, none of our CDs can do it at the same time because we all know that we might need money. It's real easy. Who's next? Carl?
Uh, we...
I think Pete did his with his, do you have more, Pete?
Well, it was a bad smell, I think there's still problems, there's stuff going on there that, I just, really takes care of a lot of the phone calls to the electrician and the American district people who are over there.
It's the bad smell, isn't it?
There's still a bad smell in there, like it was up there, it's at the other end by Robbie's office.
Oh, it's down there too?
No, no, this week.
It's in the entire building this morning.
And to me, it smells like...
Is that the new building you told me?
It smells like a dead rat to me, it's what it's like.
Isn't it bad for the little bell?
Did you know what? Did you know what? How long has that smell been in there?
It, it, it comes one day and it's gone next.
I think it depends on the weather or something.
You know, really, it's there one day and then the next day, for two weeks, it's gone and then it comes back for one day and then it's gone again.
I'm not, I'm not saying this being ugly, has anybody smelled a specific spot in the wall that, I mean, that we could see if there was something?
No, we, we tried to identify it, we're...
We can't?
I thought it was getting at the outside, it went on the roof, it probably sniffed and see if it came in that fresh air, we couldn't identify anything there. I smelled it over, it varied a little bit on the outside. I don't know. I don't know. It was already swimming, so it's asking the ventilation system.
Wasn't that?
No.
It is, today it's really bad, you could, should come in there today if you can really...
Is it all in the building?
It's throughout the whole building, no, it's throughout the whole hallway, if you go from one into the others. And the first time we noticed it was the day we were in. It was there and then it was gone the next day. And then it came back again, and then it's back today, it's really strong today.
Is there, is there a possibility we got critters within the walls?
There's a kind of vent up on the roof where something could get in there and go down in there and die or...
There's a vent about the middle of the building, facing west, there's a fresh air vent where it comes into the ventilating system, which check that, I smell, I could not smell anything, I can't argue. The ventilating system goes throughout the building and you have to have fifteen percent fresh air, those are units that don't circulate the outside air, they just circulate air in the room, on suspended tubes, they don't, so you have to have outside air coming, so it's supposed to be fifteen percent fresh air coming.
Okay, James?
Yeah, what about those, before we move on, those security cameras? I see those wires hanging down there.
I don't know, we asked the sheriff. The deal was with, with Espinoza, I know we got approved an airplane, we called him, we're trying to get a check cut, they said he has to bill us for half of it, instead of just cutting the bill in half, he actually has to bill us for half of it and he's supposed to be emailing it to us to do this. Instead of just cutting the payment in half and sending half fifty percent of it, we had to have him bill us fifty percent of the deal, so. I called him the other day, talked to him on the phone, I think he's supposed to email me back, well, he could have emailed me, but I'm emailing counters down right now, or not emailing.
And you can't read yours when yours down?
No, I can't read mine, because I mean, pretty much everything is down at my office and paper term everything.
Yeah.
So...
Mine, mine was connected to yours, sir.
I know, but I, I just heard you got yours connected by yourself, that's why we was trying to get a freestanding one.
No, you know what we did yesterday? Gio was looking for us for some stuff that was passed to you that they were trying to send to us and we would've gotten Lisa and brought the report in a hundred foot and we ran it all through the buildings and out there somewhere, we just wanted to do it for five minutes and then they maybe take it back out.
But all that stuff we had in the courthouse that we talked about the other day, all the water and stuff, it's got the humidity and the sweating.
I told you, you can't go in there anymore.
But, no, it's, it's not good, we're down for a while.
While you're standing there, Sheriff, what about that fire alarm? Is it hooked up to a phone system, the sheriff's department?
No, sir. No, sir.
Something took that, something could've hit it.
No, 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 it's not, they're, they're, any outside, it's hooked up inside the building, but it's not hooked up to anybody outside the building.
Because any...
Does our, is our insurance provider aware of that? I mean, seems like that would be a stipulation of our, of our liability and property insurance.
Ask your own person, Carl, I'll do security on the building, I don't...
Yeah, I know, I mean, I've, I've been told that it was hooked up, that's what they did.
Hooked up to what?
To like the sheriff's department, fire department.
Never had, never had, we talked, I mean, y'all been out here talking about this?
Who called out Charlie yesterday because Charlie told me that actually...
Can I tell you the story?
Uh-huh.
Chief Solis was driving by and saw the strobe lights going off at six forty-five. He called the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department called Lisa, Lisa went out there at seven oh five, opened the doors. Chief Solis and Deputy Pierce were there, they called Charlie out, Charlie came, they walked the perimeter, they walked through the building, the, the alarm was going off since one forty-five. Other people had seen it and never called anyone, there was no smoke, there was no fire, there was nothing. So they were out there at seven ten in the building, walking through it, everything was taken care of.
So I mean, like flashes lights, but there's no siren?
No, there was the, you could hear the alarm, the, the big honking alarm.
And this is about the fourth time it's done, the third time we do this, we call Chubb, who's head of the security, they got one eight hundred number right there, the first time I seen it was Saturday about three weeks ago, I called Pete and he said there should be a number right there, we called, I called them, two hours later, finally got somebody back in the San Antonio area, because we called that one eight hundred, they didn't go over nobody in San Antonio, they didn't know where Corn City, Corn City was. And I had to talk some woman wherever she was at and she said she'd get back and I stayed at the office on a Saturday morning, doing reports and stuff, waiting for them to call me back, two and a half hours later, they finally, a man called me back and said, you go back there and you hit the reset button alarm and that's basically all it is. I mean, nobody comes down, nobody looks at it, it just kinda where it's at.
I never had any issues with the new building, those, what they, Charlie talked to me about that yesterday, he had concerns.
He has some current, I talked to him at length yesterday too, very, very long time.
I mean, it sounds like you're not gonna know that there's fire, the alarm's going off unless you're driving by. I mean, and that, I'm sure if our insurance provider knew that was the case, I mean, they're not gonna...
You're gonna be a star witness call.
I can't be.
The fire alarm?
I was saying that chair before.
Get the fire alarm to alarm everybody that's working in there during the day to get out?
Yes, as well as some, somebody else.
If it blows up in the dark, well, it's no sense, let somebody drive by.
Yeah, but my understanding that it was hooked up to the sheriff's department or...
Well, if it is, it would hopefully be there.
Been discussing about ADT at one time, did they ever come down?
But I guess the Corin City Police Department...
Maybe so, maybe City...
CSI and ADT look at it. ADT said, no, it don't fit our deal, we got different equipment, whatever. CSI said, yeah, they could do it, have the whole monitor for twenty-five dollars a month, but you gotta have two more lines going in there, I'm not sure what they have there. So we didn't have anything definite on from anybody, simply, we don't think there's line wiring in there.